To order, would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence, or a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance? And Commissioner Powell, would you lead us?
My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, in the Lord's law, liberty and justice for all. This is the first meeting of the board that is being taped for practices purposes only, I hope. You all received in the mailing last Friday the minutes of the June 29, 2006 meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Powell and seconded by Commissioner Brennan. Are there any corrections to those minutes? There being none, all of those in favor of approving the minutes of June 29, 2006, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, that passes. We will now listen to speakers on the agenda item, however, there are none, I see here on my list. So we'll move on then to the superintendent's report. Dr. Rivera?
Thank you. I have a brief report today. A number of people, sometimes when I run into them in the store, they think it's July and that the students are out in June and that we have the time off, which is clearly not the case. I just thought it'd be important for you to know that I'm so pleased that we have close to 6,000 students participating in summer programs, both in a number of elementary schools and in our high schools as well. In fact, this year alone, we have at the elementary level more than 1,000 students enrolled in summer programs than we did a year ago. So it's been a great deal of terrific work by Mike Robinson and his staff and all of the instructional people who are supporting those summer programs. Secondly, there have been a number of, this is a great time to use for professional development and for leadership development activities, and so we've had principals attending certain workshops, in some cases at Harvard University in New York City. In addition to that, we have organized a major principals institute here that will actually be conducted from August 1st to August 4th, and Michelle Hancock, Marie Cianca, Cheryl Holloway have done a terrific job in planning that one. We've also planned workshops for our parents and for our school-based planning team representatives. Those are scheduled to take place on August 21st, August 22nd, August 23rd, and I think we are again, for the third time, going to invite, we have invited, he's on the agenda, Dr. Jawanza Kanjufu, and a number of other top-notch speakers to meet with our parents and with our school-based planning teams. I'm very excited about the work that we're doing on the planning side as well as on the professional development side. I will provide for you, actually as we gear up for August, more routine updates in terms of our work and what we expect to accomplish. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Rivera?
Yes, I have some questions, President Garcia.
Commissioner Powell? I mean Elliot?
Thank you.
Now you know why she got credit for approving the minutes.
I want to know, Dr. Rivera, about professional development. One, is professional development mandatory?
Yes, there are some where we actually require people to attend. For example, through our contract, we centrally command more than 20 hours of training for staff. In addition, there's time that's used at the building level.
That includes teachers? You said staff, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, yes, teachers. And we can also require, but when you require staff to attend professional development, there's also an expectation that they are compensated. In the case of the 20 hours that we have to require teachers, that does not require direct compensation.
In the QA committee, when we, when the social studies textbook that I oppose was brought to the QA committee, we were told that there would be professional development training for that textbook. And if you recall, the textbook was, we're not opening it up, you had two slaves, one black, one white, two slaves, one woman, one man, smiling, dressed very well, and it sent the wrong message. And there was discussion that there would be professional development in reference to that because we know that images are very powerful, and it would send the wrong message that slavery was okay. So my question is, is, and we were told that it was going to occur in July, is that training going on in July?
Let me ask, Cheryl, you want to respond to that, please?
Yes, professional development is taking place, and what it will look like is that we have a number of teachers who are in the professional development cycle right now. Those teachers may have gone back out to schools and training off from the beginning at the beginning of August.
Now let's be clear, I'm talking about that social studies textbook. Are you telling me that the social studies textbook, there's professional? Another question I have, Dr. Rivera, is do you have data on the dropout rate for 2005, 2006, and data for the trend of the dropout rate over the last three years? Is that information available?
Yes, we have data. In fact, I can tell you that the dropout rate three years ago was at 10.7 percent. It went to 9.4 percent. Last year it was at 8.9 percent, I believe. So we have a downward trend in terms of the number of students dropping out. We have not yet calculated it for '06, and I may be off one-tenth of a percent, but I'm fairly close, it's in that range. So we can provide that for you.
Okay, it's going, you said 10 percent, 9 percent?
It was at 10.7 percent, I believe, four years ago, I'm recalling from data that I looked at recently, to nine-point-something percent to eight-point-something percent. And I can give you those specifics, you know, we can send those to you, you can have them available. What I do not have right now is the dropout statistics for the current year, '05, '06. I don't know if they've been calculated yet. We are in the process of completing our step reports, they will be completed by the end of the first week of August. I will then have a good sense of the graduation rates as well as the dropout rate for schools in the district.
Okay, and just one last question I have. Where are we in the meeting, the May meeting that I attended, I was out last month, where are we with the Attorney General's, the Attorney General's report in reference to some of the issues that have been raised? And secondly to that, do we have any administration staff who are supposed to be credentialed and are not credentialed according to state law?
Our administrative staff are credentialed, and I think you-
In the positions that they're supposed to be in?
In the positions they're supposed to be in. And with regard to the completion of the investigation, that is something I think we've all been waiting for, for more than six months for that, and who knows when? I mean, I believe that it would have come to closure several months ago, and it has not, so I can't predict when that's going to come to closure.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Rivera? Then we'll move on to committee reports, standing committee reports. We'll start with Quality Assurance, Commissioner Thompson.
Quality Assurance did not meet in July, there's no report. President Garcia.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Powell.
The Finance Committee met just prior to this meeting. We approved three of the resolutions that are in our packet to, and do recommend their approval at this meeting. That would be Resolution 75, 76, 77, I'm sorry, that's not right. Resolutions 76, 77, 78 were approved by the Finance Committee and recommended for board Resolution 75, the committee did not, ran out of time before we took any action on it, so I would ask the President Garcia to receive my motion to remove Resolution 75 from the packet and not call for a vote on that resolution until after it's been discussed by the Finance Committee.
If there are no objections, I will do so?
Thank you. That concludes the Finance Committee report. I do have one other thing I would like to share for the good of the order. I've met with the State Director of AQE, Billy Eastman, and with the local staff person, Rosemary Rivera. They're advocating for, they're doing some coordination now for a collection of activities called Act for Education Month. They're calling upon boards to pass proclamations that September be declared Education Month and other activities to call attention to issues around the state funding levels for education. I've shared with you a flyer. Would ask that this board consider a proclamation in its August meeting to declare September officially Education Month and ask that the superintendent and the Student Leadership Council and any other parties that have interest in doing anything that will call attention to the state funding issues and the Declaration of Education Month, that we might be able to launch those over the rest of the summer.
Are there any objections to proclaiming the month of September Education Month? Hearing none, then we'll direct the superintendent to prepare a resolution to that effect.
Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Commissioner Brennan?
Policy Committee has not met since June 29th. It will establish a meeting date soon after consultation with Commissioner Henley, and will be, of course, subsequently in this agenda addressing the wellness policy.
Commissioner Elliot, do you have a Governance Committee report?
We were scheduled to meet the 25th, and that's getting moved to, I think, August 1st, and I'm not prepared to report on the governance report.
Thank you very-
President Rivera?
Thank you very much. Then we'll move on to considering the resolutions, and you all have in front of you the packet of resolutions, and we'll go on to Resolutions 1 to 31, which are given resources resolutions, staff changes, resignations, authorizations for additional paid, et cetera. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 1 through 31.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Commissioner Brennan and Powell. All of those in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I have questions, President Rivera, on-
Garcia.
What was that, I'm sorry.
No, not a problem. We all look alike here.
So does Will and I. Resolution 3, question here, I see that we have a number of, it just appears, and I could be wrong, a number of Hispanic Americans who are hired. My question is, in terms of probationary teachers, what's the recruitment, what, how many of those teachers that we recruited for this year are African-American, President? Dr. Rivera?
We actually complete in September an analysis, and I usually, and in the past, I've reported it to the board in terms of the number of Latino, African-American, Asian, and other staff, white staff who are hired. So we do break that down, and we typically complete an annual report. So there is sort of a, we are keeping a running track. I had a good sense of how many hires to date have been minority and what percent, but I'd be more than happy to provide this board with a public report on hires at the time that I normally do in September.
Is that satisfactory, Commissioner Elliot?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
In reference to Resolution 9, on the table of contents, if you will, it says there that the termination was based on lack of certification. I guess I'm just wondering why that reason wasn't placed in the resolution itself. All of the other resolutions have, whether they're terminated, I mean, whether there is resignation or whatever the case may be. Is that just an oversight? That's on page four.
Number nine below?
Yeah, Resolution 9.
Sure.
It just says that the person was terminated, but if you look on the table of contents, for lack of a better term, it says that the person lacked certification. Do we not, and maybe I just didn't notice this before, do we not put a reason within the resolution of the termination? Okay, all right, okay.
Thank you.
And then number 12, my vote is no on number 12, but, excuse me, that's incorrect. My vote is yes on number 12, but is this, are these, this resolution, Dr. Rivera, does this have more to do with the planning phase to get prepared for the school year? As I was looking through all of the requests under this one resolution, and it's many, I believe it's, yeah, it's many under here, that it appears that this is where there's a lot of planning being done in preparation for the school year. Am I correct on that?
Actually, that would be a correct response on most of them, because a lot of the-
Yes.
-summer curriculum work and study guide development is in fact for the school year. But let me just ask if there's a clarification, the development of the study guides in this particular case, I'm assuming is for the school year, under the arts, one would think.
Some of the arts, some of, you'll notice there's some dates here that are back in the previous year, we had a situation where administrator did not submit a resolution in time and fashion to concede a reason to the teacher. We waited to submit this until appropriate action was taken regarding the administrator. Before, we now acknowledge that we intend to correct this in future.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
And question under, it's the same resolution, but I'll just ask, Destiny Implementation. What is Destiny Implementation?
Destiny is our new textbook and library book management system that the board was very interested in exploring a couple of years ago. It's all networked online now where we manage all our textbooks and library books with central server online. I know that Commissioner Thompson is involved in this, so we're training all our librarians and our teachers on how to use that system.
Okay, and a question about the district's consolidated and Part 154 applications, what's that?
This is a major grant that we get from the Education Department on serving, having programs to serve students with limited English speaking, and actually Part 154's been around for 30, 40 years, and this is an annual process of updating our plan and our proposal for use of this grant.
Under, this is in reference to the three-hour training in the BRI's Behavioral Monitoring Program, it seems that it's only, well, it's only three hours according to what's brought before us. That's something, in my opinion, that we need to have a number of hours of training on. Can you all speak to that? In other words, are these teachers only required to do a three-hour training and that's it for the year?
No, it's actually a continuing training program, it's over three years, Commissioner, and this is just one phase of it. We've been involved in BRI training for probably about eight years now. It does over a play bit of time.
So is it three hours, is it three hours a year for staff, or?
No, it's actually-
How many hours do they get our-
I'll give you some specifics for you, but I know it's multiple times and blocks and three hours.
This is a long resolution, so just bear with me, please. Resolution, on Resolution 15, the description seems to be incomplete.
How so?
Just take a look at it, teachers, the wording is not there, I think. It leaves off within the, on page 48, Resolution 15.
Okay.
I didn't do the description.
Section 1 says teachers needed to update affective-
Correct.
...condition for the discharge of math students by present.
Yeah, that's correct. What's the rest of that sentence or that description?
I love.
Okay, okay. Could you all find out?
Sure.
All right, thank you. So for the time being, my vote is no on that, since I don't have sufficient information. Number 17 is no. Question I have in reference to Resolution 27 is the salary that we pay for secretaries. And my question is, I saw on previous resolutions that paraprofessional staff who work with teachers are not paid this amount of money, or am, can you clarify that? Appears that paraprofessionals are paid $9, $10, where we've got secretaries making, you know, $14, $17. Does anyone speak to that?
Commissioner Elliot, we cannot discuss that issue. Staff salaries are established with the unions under union contracts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's it. Thank you.
Are we done?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So do you get the voting? It's 6-2, 6, no, 5, it'll be 5-2-0 on Resolutions 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, no, one no on 15, one no on 17, 16, 18, and the rest of them are 5-0, okay? Then we'll move on to Resolutions 32 and 33, educational facilities. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 32 and 33.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Powell, seconded by whom? By Commissioner Thompson. Any discussion on those resolutions? All those in favor then, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Elliot?
Commissioner Brennan was pointing out to me about the Resolution 15. On the packet that we get here, it has a period after the, but in the packet that I reviewed at, you know, in the office, that we got earlier, it's a run-on, it doesn't, it doesn't finish.
Well, but we're done with-
I think it's very good.
Yeah, yeah.
True.
But so that's what was, that was where I was.
Yeah, we're done with that. We're on 32 and 33. How do you vote?
Resolution, in reference to Resolution 37.
We're not there yet.
32 and 33, Commissioner Elliot.
Thank you. Questions on this are in reference to, are there African-American contractors on these contracts?
That is information that we can certainly provide for you. Vern, do you have information?
Now, on Resolution 32, if I may, Commissioner Elliot, that is for a final payment, makes no difference at this point whether there is a minority or not, since this is a final payment under a contract.
Still like to know.
Commissioner, just stay, bear with me while I reframe your question.
If you can just get it later, that'll be fine.
Yeah, okay.
That'd be fine, I'm okay with that.
Basically, these are contracts that were put out for competitive bids some time ago and awarded, and these are adjustments to the contract to help complete the construction and facilities modernizations that are taking place. These are not new contracts, these are existing contracts, but we can do some research on the minority status of the vendors.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
My vote is no on both of those at this time.
Commissioner Brennan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, so the motion passes 4 to 1. We'll move on to Resolution number 34, Budget and Information Technology. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution number 34.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Powell and seconded by Commissioner Brennan. Are there any questions on Resolution number 34? There being none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move on then to Resolutions 35 through 41 for procurement and supply. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 35 through 41.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Powell and seconded by Commissioner Brennan.
Thompson.
Thompson and seconded by Commissioner Brennan. Any questions regarding those resolutions?
Yes, President Garcia, same question, reference to African-American participation in these projects, so I would like to get additional information, and I will follow up with a formal inquiry about that. But my vote is for 35, 36, 37, 38 is no. Question in reference to Resolution 39, how much is this contract? There's no amount listed in the contract, in the resolution.
This is a contract extension, so the original resolution would have had that amount, so this is obviously not to exceed that amount. Do we have information, Vern, or, okay, we'll provide that for you.
My vote is no on that at this time. Same thing for 40, there's no amount here. Obviously, these were- And obviously, these were, I would imagine, prior to my tenure.
Normal practice on contract extensions, Commissioner Elliott, is that a contract amount is contracted forward with the vendor. If the vendor does not exceed that amount, usually, an extension is given up to the amount of the original contract. That is a standard practice. In some cases, if the original amount exceeded, then you will get a resolution for additional funds to that, to that particular contract.
Let me just respectfully disagree. I think that we need to have all the information before, so that we'll know what we're voting on. I would imagine that these contracts were in place prior to the new board members coming on board, and we would, I would like to have that information, because I was not here prior.
If I could, Commissioner, one purpose of getting the resolutions to you in advance is so that if we can help in decision-making by providing you with answers in advance, that might help facilitate your views about whether or not to vote yea or nay on some of these. So we would be happy if you get us questions a few days after you receive the agenda to get as many responses, if not all, to what we have for-
Well, respectfully, Dr. Rivera, I asked you that in reference to who was on the Rochester Children's Zone on that board and the people who were, and how much that they were being paid. You didn't get me that information, so I'm confused.
We're talking about the Friday packet that you get with all the resolutions in it. The reason that we give it to you on Friday is so that you review that packet, and if you have any questions, to call the board staff, our people, and request clarification or additional information, so that we don't hold up the meeting like we're doing now.
I understand what you're saying, President Garcia.
Yes, but you're not obviously doing what everybody else in the board has done.
Let me say this. I did exactly that when I inquired about the Rochester Children's Zone, and I did not get the information. I did exactly that. I followed the procedures and was not given the information. That's why I'm asking these questions. Thank you.
President-
Commissioner-
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
In reference to Resolution 41, this resolution, in my opinion, is vague, because I'm not sure what it means, the last statement that says best interest of the school. So my vote is no on that. I don't know what that means, best interest of the school. That needs to be more clearly defined, in my opinion.
Fine. Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Brennan?
I apologize for holding the meeting up any further, but just, it occurs to me that it might be useful, because I think that perhaps for newer board members, you know, and I'm, I have this concern as well, with reference to the practice of the dollar amount of the contract being the same, or assumed to be the same if it doesn't exceed, that it might be helpful if maybe the language of the resolutions in the future could specifically state that, so that the concern could be addressed, and there'd be no doubt about it. It's reasonable, I think, that, you know, if you don't know that that's the practice, that you would have that sort of a question. And I think it was raised in good faith, and I'm sure that we can tweak the language in a way that would address that concern.
Your suggestion is much appreciated, and we will try to comply with that request.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll move on to resolutions then. The vote, by the way, you got the votes no. Okay, fine. Thank you. Resolutions 42 through 78, and this would be-
Accepting Resolution 75.
Yeah, this would be excluding Resolution 75, okay? So if 42 through 78 excluding Resolution 75, I'll entertain a motion to approve those resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Removed and second by Commissioner Powell and Brennan. Any questions regarding those resolutions? Commissioner Elliott, I am going to ask you to abstain from Resolution number 46. Do you concur?
You didn't have to ask me. I was going to do that anyway, President.
Well, I asked if there are any questions. I expected you to say that you abstained from 46.
Oh, I was waiting to do that when you asked for the vote. That's when I was going to do that.
Thank you. All of those in favor of resolutions, please say aye.
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 Oppose?
As the President said, I am abstaining from that- From Resolution 46.
Then we'll, that concludes the resolutions. We'll move on then to a vote on the wellness policy. You all received the policy in last Friday's packet. We have discussed it at the previous meeting, and we have discussed it as an informational item some time ago. So now it comes the time to vote on that wellness policy. It will be policy number 54 of 5. I'll entertain a motion to approve the wellness policy I sent to you in the packet last Friday.
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brennan and second by-
Second.
Commissioner Power. Any discussion on the wellness policy?
I just want to thank once again all of the individuals on Manny's staff that invested a great deal of time in developing this, and the many, many, many parents and other community members that came to the table repeatedly to put together some really good language. Now the challenge is to take, again, the best language ever put on paper and turn it into a wholesome policy. Thank you.
All those in favor of approving the wellness policy, number 54 of 5, sent, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. There are no new business.